I will not comment on that.
I call the meeting to order. I state that the news media has been notified and that there is a quorum present. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
A moment, Chairman. Second.
Do we have an approval of the agenda? It's been seconded. Any discussion? And all those in favor of this motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. And we will move on to superintendent's job now.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I appreciate that. And certainly thank all of you for adjusting your schedules to be here a little early this afternoon. I think it will facilitate us maybe not staying out so late tonight. So, thank you again. I'm going to go down to the podium and join the rest of the team who will be doing the presentation this evening. So, we're really looking forward to sharing with you an update on the strategic plan, actually, the plan that you all named, the One Berkeley Strategic Plan. And behind the scenes, we have been doing lots of work and we're excited to have an opportunity to share that with you today. As a recap, this workshop not only keeps you involved with the One Berkeley Plan, but it's also the third piece of supporting data for the superintendent's evaluation process. I think it's good to start with the question why. So, people ask, why is there such a focus on strategic planning? Why don't we just keep doing the work and not talk about the plan? So, I think this says it well, those who fail to plan, plan to fail. And what happens in the absence of a really solid plan is that people tend to do what we want to do, do what they think the boss wants them to do, or even worse, just continue to be in a stage of reaction. And so, this plan really gives us a great foundation for the work that we're doing to move forward. Thank you for being here this afternoon. So, what is a strategic plan, or what is strategic planning? It's really a roadmap, or more formally, it's a process by which leaders determine what the organization intends to be in the future and how it will get there. The One Berkeley Plan emerged from the work of many. You were intimately involved with the development of a vision, the mission, the focus areas, and the goals that support the plan. Beyond that, we had our teachers, a parent work group, cabinet, and principals who provided us lots of input about what they thought Berkeley County School District should focus on for the next five years, 2016 to 2021, our roadmap. So, where is the plan going to take us? Sometimes the best place to look for good answers is in a children's book. So, tonight, where are we going? You remember the conversation between Alice and the Cheshire Cat? Alice says, "Which way should I go?" And the Cheshire Cat says, "That depends on where you're going." And Alice says, "I don't know where I'm going." And the Cheshire Cat says, "Then it doesn't really matter which way you go." So, we don't want to be in that predicament. We want to know where we're going and we want to know how we're going to get there. You're very familiar with the four pieces of the strategic plan that you see in this graphic, the vision, the mission, the goals, and the focus areas because you were intimately involved. And it really starts with the big picture like at the top of that funnel, which is your vision and mission, and narrows as you go to the bottom. And the part you haven't seen is the part we're going to spend some time talking about So, the vision that we developed, I love it because it gives me a real visual graphic of what we want every child to have, whether it's our own child or someone else's child. We want them to be successful. So, our vision, empower every student for success. The mission tells about the how that the vision will be realized. And some of the key words and phrases in here are actually partnership, we can't do it alone, dynamic instruction, the most important thing that happens is the interaction between a student and a teacher, and personalized opportunities. In other words, you want a plan that isn't one-size-fits-all. And this plan is not a one-size-fits-all plan. So, the how of our plan, and this is the part that you haven't really seen yet, it's actually those hundreds of action steps that are at the bottom. You saw the vision, you saw the mission, saw the five goals, saw the 28 focus areas. So, then, we took that work and created what makes it happen, the actual how, which is the hundreds of action steps. I gave you a copy of the hundreds of action steps at your meeting on September the 13th. So, the hundreds of action steps were actually created by the goalkeepers that are seated to my right and by the teams that they have in their divisions. And so, you'll get to see that come to life tonight. So, the next part of the strategic planning presentation will be the update from the goalkeepers. And because there are hundreds of action steps, I've asked them to pick just two or three of the action steps that they feel are important within their goal and share that with you because it will give you the flavor of how we're translating the vision, mission, goals, and focus areas into something that impacts our classrooms, our students, and our teachers. Keep in mind that there are hundreds, and our purpose is just to highlight them for you this afternoon. It's not designed to be sit here and go through every one of those hundreds of action steps. So, Deion Jackson is going to kick us off. Deion is the goalkeeper for Goal One, School Climate. He will be followed by Kevin O'Gorman, which is Goal Two, Student Achievement, followed then by Archie Francini, Goal Three, Communications. Kim McLaren will be filling in for Glenda with Goal Four, Human Resources, and end up with Brantley Thomas talking about fiscal responsibility. And now for Deion.
Good evening. We'll start with Goal One, School Climate. We will provide a healthy, safe, and supportive learning environment because we know that we have to take care of the environment first in order to do what we do best, which is educate children. So, to do so, we're going to hit on Focus Area One, which is to assure the safety of students and staff. So, we know safety and security of our students and staff is always priority number one. We're going to highlight Action Step Five, which is just a few of the strategies that we're going to use. So, provide district-supported safety training for all employees. So, that's using Darkness to Light, Krav Maga, and a full-scale crisis management simulation in partnership with local law enforcement. So, with Darkness to Light, we're going to use this training to continue to raise awareness and educate our employees with regards to child sexual abuse. We will conduct face-to-face trainings with all of our employees utilizing the Train the Trainer method, the model, and build capacity to provide the training as necessary to our employees. This training will start next semester and is scheduled to be completed by August 1st, excuse me, April 1st. As far as Krav Maga, this is a modified version of the Krav Maga, and this is also done in partnership with our local law enforcement. We're training our administrators. This is actually the second year of this implementation. So, we're training our administrators. This is a last-resort de-escalation tactic. So, if nothing else works, this is the last resort. So, the intent of the training is for self-defense only. So, there are no strikes. This is just for self-defense. And as far as the full-scale crisis management simulation, this is also done in partnership with local law enforcement and emergency responders. This is in addition to our annual crisis management drills that we have, one in the fall and then one in the spring. So, this is in addition to that. Those drills are scaled down for time's sakes. However, this drill will practice the initial response as well as the reunification process. So, this includes the relocation of students, the media notices, and reuniting students with their families. We know that it's very time-consuming, however, unfortunately, given the recent events that occurred in the upstate, it just reminds us that that's one of those unfortunate realities. So, it's better to practice and not need it versus needing it and not having it. Once we do the drills, it will also include modification of the procedures as necessary to adopt the best practices. Focus Area Two, systematically review and refine the policy, process, and procedures to support organizational effectiveness in relationship to growth in our changing community. We know that we're growing. We talk about it all of the time. And one of the recommendations from Advanced Ed was to develop a systemic approach to deal with the growth in our area. So, with that, we have Action Step 13, to analyze building systems and enrollment trends to sustain the learning environment in existing facilities. And that includes all of our areas. There's a few areas listed there, ROTC, PE, but all of our areas, all our facilities, all of our areas. So, with that, we have the Facilities Conditions Assessment. That's to conduct the Facilities Conditions Assessment for all existing schools, at least all of our older schools. This was also recommended by Public Pathways, the consulting firm that we hired to do our enrollment study. This will allow us to complete the Facilities Master Plan and give us a five-to-10-year outlook and allow us to plan strategically and be more proactive as opposed to being reactive when it comes to maintenance and things of that sort. This will also give us an opportunity to identify areas of opportunity that exist to create equity among all of our educational facilities. So, provide this a great opportunity and environment for all of our students and all of our schools. We'll also utilize the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. This committee and this strategy was mentioned during the board's workshop during this past summer. So, the plan is to hopefully get that up and running by the end of this semester. In Focus Area Five, analyze building systems and enrollment trends to sustain the learning environments in existing facilities. So, the objective here is to maximize the use of all of our facilities. We'll look at Action Step Three, use the results of the enrollment forecast to make recommendations to adjust the attendance zones to maximize capacity at each school. We recall the Strom Thurmond Study as well as the most recent enrollment study. Those recommendations, excuse me, the results from those reports, the Strom Thurmond Report, is projecting the need of more than 20 schools over the next 20 years. And that was done under the assumption that we utilize all of our schools to the full capacity. So, we know that there are some schools that were, some areas that are described as geographically isolated and it wouldn't be feasible to send, to make adjustments in some of those areas. However, there are some opportunities that do exist. Where those opportunities exist, it's recommended that we make those changes in order to maximize capacity. So, again, making changes to the boundary lines to maximize inventory is also a recommendation by Public Pathways. We'll also utilize the strategy down at the bottom, the Superintendent's Advisory Committee as well, so to allow that committee, that body, to view the data and also help make a recommendation as well. I think next, we have Dr. O'Gorman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, the next, we'll talk about Goal Two, our Student Achievement Area, build upon our Unified Curriculum Assessment System and Professional Learning Community Practices to Prepare Students for Success. So, under Focus Area One, to develop and implement strategies to integrate systemic use of technology as a tool to support teaching and learning. This ties right in with the Advanced Ed Improvement Priority throughout our action steps for this particular area. You hear a lot about technology being integrated. So, Action Step Nine, Implement the District Technology Plan that Supports Student Learning Instructional Practices, Parental Support, that one-to-one initiative and Bring Your Own Device. Just want to hats off to Diane Driggers and her folks for all the work they've done on this initiative. And I look at the numbers up here that the Office of Technology has done, and it's pretty impressive. So, over 12,000 Chromebooks have been distributed in 23 schools in grades three through eight. Partnership with Google allowed for that Wi-Fi on a couple of our buses. We have reorganized the instructional technology, just out of the Division of Instruction into the Office of Technology. Added over 11,000 pieces of equipment, and you see not just Chromebooks, but computers, laptops, and things of that nature. And they've revamped the district webpage. We've had a lot of positive feedback on that. And also added that BCSD mobile application. Those folks have been hitting the ground running since the start of the school year. Evaluate and Modify Strategies to Address Student Achievement with a Priority Focus on Writing and Math. So, writing and math were some areas that were a little bit weaker for us last year. So, those are some focus areas. So, we will do that across the board, but also addressing some of our achievement gaps as well. So, Action Step Six is to Plan and Collaborate with Six Rural Schools to Support the Rural Schools Initiative. So, we've gone about setting short-term and some intermediate goals for that initiative, and we will set long-term goals with the larger steering committee, which is that next bullet. We have created a steering committee. In June, we had a community meeting out in St. Stevens and basically asked folks to come and listen to our presentation about that conceptual framework over to the right where we basically said, it takes more than, it takes a village to raise a child and schools can't do it alone. And we believe that educators and families and community members should be working together to make sure that our kids are healthy and happy in order for them to be academically successful. So, we had another meeting here after that initial meeting and said, you've heard this idea. If you want to be involved, to be a part of that steering committee, come on. And we had 48 people show up right here in this room, and we had a visioning day and have, we have a draft vision statement at this point, actually, two, that we will revisit at our next meeting. So, we're really excited about that. We've added some funding, Title One and At Risk. I'll give you some exact numbers on the next slide. And we're setting up monitoring and evaluation procedures to make sure that this process continues to move forward and we're not being stagnant. So, the board approved over half a million dollars for the Rural School Initiative. Like I said, we had that first steering committee. We had representatives from the community. We had members from the chamber, from Wings, from Trident United Way, from Reading Partners. It was just a great day of a variety of different folks that showed up. And again, obviously, some educators there, but a lot of the people came to the table and were really engaged in that conversation. We even put Ms. Blackburn to work helping us draft that vision statement. We, as I said earlier, we increased Title One and At Risk totaling over $230,000 to those schools. Read 180, we have started with in those six schools. So, we've got 395 licenses purchased, over 300 kids using those licenses at this point. Six labs are up and running, and we've got kids in there. And now, we're just trying to learn ourselves how to implement with fidelity. So, the principals and district staff will go through training on how to evaluate the effectiveness of those labs and how they're running. So, we're still learning as we go, but as we walk through those labs, kids are engaged and appear to be learning, and it looks to be going really well. So, the next is, Action Step Nine is to Provide STEAM Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math Opportunities for Students in Identified STEAM Schools and really across the entire district. When we talked about the vision for these STEAM schools, we did a presentation here and I showed you a quick video clip about STEAM activities across the entire district. Just want to kind of remind you that even though we've opened two STEAM schools, that we do training on STEAM district-wide. On the far left there, that's actually out of the BCSD Conference when we worked with Teacher Forum on that Staff Development Day. These two teachers were learning how to teach keyboarding using an iPad during that particular session. Obviously, we opened Philip Simmons Elementary and Philip Simmons Middle. Prior to that, we had training for all of the teachers from Keene Hoy and those two schools, specific to STEAM implementation. We partnered with Clemson University to do that. And on the far right, we actually had the community come in. We had parents, community members, and students come in and participate in STEAM activities so they could actually experience what a STEAM lesson might look like. So, we had one at Keene Hoy and one at Daniel Island. And Daniel Island, we will start STEAM training with in 17, 18. And again, continue STEAM activities throughout the district. All right. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Francini. He's going to talk to you about Goal Three, Communications.
Thank you, Dr. O'Gorman, and good evening, Board Members. Goal Three, Communications, who will partner with stakeholders to build advocacy for our students, families, schools, and district to promote transparency and to provide accurate information. One of the things that we heard as a result of our Advanced Ed visit was that we needed to improve our two-way communication with all of our stakeholders, and we believe that we've begun that process and done a very good job so far. I want to highlight some of the things that we've done. You're already aware that we had a very successful Berkeley, One Berkeley Golf Tournament last June. We had 110 golfers participate and seven volunteers. Thirty-five businesses contributed funds and prize money for the tournament, and additional 25 businesses contributed prizes, gift certificates, or rounds of golf. We made a profit of over $13,000 from this tournament, which was used as seed money for the One Berkeley Goes Back to School Festival. This is the first time that our golf tournament has made a significant profit. Also, as has already been reported to you, we had an extremely successful One Berkeley Goes Back to School Festival. In my 44 years of as an educator, I think it's one of the greatest events I've ever had the opportunity to be a part of. We had, we filled and distributed over 3,000 bookbags. We had 147 volunteers. We had 53 sponsors and supply drive sponsors. We had 31 Resource Fair partners, and we raised over $55,000 from our business community. So, no general fund dollars were used for the One Berkeley Goes Back to School Festival. And you'll see some pictures there of students getting their bookbags, some of our volunteers or voluntoles, I'm not sure which some of those were. And then, on the right, a list of our sponsors for the golf tournament. Focus Area Four, Provide Timely and Accurate Information Using a Broad Range of Two-Way Communication Methods to Support Awareness and Advocacy for the Berkeley County School District. Action Step Number Three, Plan, Coordinated, and Implemented a Meeting with Clergy and Realtors. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting with the area clergy. We had 24 in attendance, including Reverend Barnes, to come. We shared our Moving Berkeley Forward presentation. We also showed the One Berkeley Goes Back to School Festival video. We reviewed the new vision, mission, and logo for the school district and had open discussion among the clergy. We also have scheduled a meeting with our Realtors in the area on Thursday, November the 10th. Once again, we'll show the Moving Berkeley Forward presentation. We will also show the video, review the vision, mission, and logo, and have open discussion among the area Realtors. Streamline the District's Social Media Accounts and Website and Roll Out of a New App. We've worked with the Safety and Security Officer to provide quick and accurate updates concerning crisis situations such as lockdowns, power outages, et cetera, to parents via social media, through Facebook, and also through Twitter. And just an example, some of those posts and have, we've shared during Hurricane Matthew on Saturday, October the 8th, we reached over 30,000 people, which was after the storm. And then, on Monday, October the 10th, we had almost 38,000 people like us because of, we were telling them when we were going back to school. And usually, our biggest hits are usually about weather. We also have implemented a new Berkeley County app. We've worked with Diane Driggers and the Technology Department to offer ideas and come up with a new Berkeley County app, and it is up and running. And so far to date, we've had 1,360 people have downloaded the app. Plan coordinated in the process of implementing eight community gatherings throughout the district entitled Moving Berkeley Forward. Last night, we had the fifth of those eight. We have three more scheduled between now and the first of next week. Last night, we were at Cross High School. It was, that's our smallest attendance area, but it was the largest attended, and they asked the most questions. We had a very active group that was very interested in what's going on in our school district. During those forums, the superintendent and her cabinet, we present the Moving Berkeley Forward presentation. And also, we have a question-and-answer session by the superintendent's, questions from the audience and answers from the superintendent's cabinet. You'll see the pictures here. The Moving Berkeley Forward shows what's on our website, showing the dates and the sites of those community forums. On the left, bottom-left, is a screenshot of our new website that we're very proud of, and we think people like a lot better than the last one we had. And the far right there on the bottom is the cabinet on the hot seat taking some of the questions and providing helpful information to our public. Dr. McLaren.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In Human Resources, we are always focusing to attract, recruit, and develop and retain quality teachers, administrators, and staff. The first focus area we'd like to talk about is enhancing recruitment strategies to build on our highly qualified and diverse workforce. You heard a few board meetings ago about all the things we have been doing to recruit in our colleges and universities and different strategies we are using for critical shortage areas. Please know that we are continuing to add universities and colleges that we visit as well as adding to our strategies and what we have in our bag to try to recruit and retain the best for Berkeley County School District. Also, we are looking forward for Action Step Five in an upcoming board meeting to give you all of the details of our recommendations for the incentives that we are proposing for the teachers in rural areas to try to help make sure that we have the best teachers for all of our students. The final action step in Focus Area Two today is to evaluate teacher cadet programs and provide recommendations as to how to increase student interest in the field of education, especially our critical subject areas. This year, we do have teacher cadets. We have 109 students in all six of our traditional high schools, but we are continuing to investigate ways to increase student interest in the teacher cadet program and to expand it to the middle college, as well as looking at next year instituting pro team in our middle schools as we set up those master schedules. Focus Area Four for Human Resources is that we are going to support administrators, teachers, and staff through quality professional development. You all are aware that as we restructured this past summer, Human Resources picked up Sharon Snyder, and a significant portion of her job now is to help with this implementation of mentoring and coaching for classified employees. We are also very excited that the board supported an additional mentor, so we are now up to three full-release district mentors for our certified staff as well. Our two full-release mentors last year touched 175 teachers, so we are hoping to touch more teachers and in a more in-depth way now that we're at three for our 44 schools. Action Step Five is absolutely important because we need to build our leadership due to anticipated loss as we approach the June 30th, 2018 cliff that we are going to see with Terry with regards to our leadership, once they retire, only being able to earn $10,000 a year, so not being able to continue in the profession once they retire. So, with this, we are doing a number of things to try to build our leadership in Berkeley County. One is that we have changed. We used to have, Mr. Hayes, I think you know, sometimes assistant principals get pigeonholed into different roles. We are growing all of our assistant principals as instructional leaders through APPLCs that meet once a month. It's a restructuring of the professional development that all APs receive. And then, for the past two years, we ran the Assistant Principal Induction Program for our first-year assistant principal support as a pilot program. It was highly successful. So, this is our first full year of full implementation of AIP for this county. And since the state does not provide a evaluation does not provide a evaluation system specifically for assistant principals, we're very excited about this and think it provides good mentoring and assistance to our newest assistant principals. Whoops, I hit one too many. Focus Area Six is that we're going to implement salary schedules which are competitive in the region and the state. We're going to develop an RFP and solicit potential vendors to conduct a comprehensive salary review of all positions so that we can take a multi-year approach to competitive pay grade compensation across this county in all areas. And then Action Step Two is to continue to make recommendations to the board to secure competitive salaries so that we again can continue to recruit and retain the very best in Berkeley County. And next, we have Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. McLaren. Good afternoon as well.
Good afternoon.
The area of Goal Five, Fiscal Responsibility, we will be proactive in obtaining and utilizing resources to provide a world-class education for all students. Focus Area One, Recover past budget reductions and increase future capacity to support growth and student services. Action Step One, Build on the information collection process developed in spring of 2016 to fully engage schools in the budget planning and priority setting process. If you remember, we did that online process where the schools put in information there. We'll continue to build on that and use that information as we move forward. The chart on the right is that chart that, that the board did in the 1617 develop process to set priorities, which was very helpful in developing the budget for 1617. And we'll continue to use that as well for the 1718 budget. We will also want to include in 1718 budget process, community meetings, which we kind of ran out of time, I think, for 1617. But we'll get some community input and go out to different areas to, to get input from the community. Action Steps Two, Revisit data collection for viability and budget planning for 1718 and beyond. So we'll be, again, using the strength, same strategies, but also develop some new ones to, to develop the planning process for 1718 and beyond. And we'll talk about some long-range planning on the next slide. Focus Area Two, Develop a long-range forecasting system for making financial decisions. You'll see an excerpt out of our audit for FY15 based on information collective process developed the, oh, sorry. Long-range planning projections, we recommend that school districts prepare a three- to five-year rolling projection. And also, from the Strom Thurmond Study, the same sort of theme. Action Step Three, Develop a three-to-five-year long-range planning tool using historical data and future growth trends to use in multi-year budget projections. That was an improvement priority by Advanced Ed. It talked about resources, including time, people, and facilities, but also money. So we'll be working with that. And you'll see a report or a spreadsheet that I've used or developed in the budget process, or some of you will, for the 1718 budget. Action Step Two, and is also a best practice as a result of the audit comments and some of the articles that we've been reading. Action Step Four, Use the above projections in presenting the information to the school board and the community meetings, engagement meetings to promote public advocacy as it relates to school finance. Again, you'll see that format when we developed the 1718 budget. And as we develop those priorities, some of those priorities may not get into that 1718 budget. So we could see how 18 and 19, 1920, 2021 might look as we move those things down the road. Action Step Five, Revisit the projections after audited information to monitor its accuracy and adjust as needed. That same spreadsheet that I talked about, after the audit's done, go back and see how good we did or how bad we did, and make assumption adjustments there as well. And also, develop an RFP for comprehensive compensation study to use in budget planning, as Dr. McLaren mentioned. That RFP is out there. We've been answering some questions. And we'll have a district-level evaluation team to see who we'd like to award that to. And again, that process will be used in a multi-year salary compensation development. Focus Area Three, Provide transparent financial information to support the educational process. The implementation of a new enterprise resource planning system to allow more integrated systems, both internal and external. There, there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes with assessments of needs and getting input from end-users. On March 14th, 2017, we'll bring that process, that RFP to you for approval as we look to transition into a new accounting, HR system. And we'll share some of the details related to that. Action Step Five Eight, Monitor the finance website to make sure we are in compliance with the state transparency law as it relates to our check register. And Step Nine, Monitor the same website to ensure that we have accurate and up-to-date information posted related to audit, budget, procurement, and anything else we can find. Ms. Blackburn?
So, there is a great deal of quality work going on in Berkeley County School District. So we have been very, very busy. Some of you have been able to join us as we've been doing the Moving Berkeley Forward presentations and have had great audiences and great questions coming from our stakeholders. One of the things that we tried to keep in mind as we developed the strategic plan action steps is to be sure that we included the Advanced Ed improvement priorities. And you'll recall that these are things we must accomplish in order to be eligible for continued accreditation by Advanced Ed. The first one, and if you think about the things that we talked about, in addition to those five goals, the 28 focus areas, the hundreds of action steps, we've kept this on the front burner. And many of the things that you heard tonight focus right on the Advanced Ed improvement priorities, including the, especially the One Berkeley Connects activities. Because you'll recall that Advanced Ed said, you've got great technology, but we don't see the kids using it. We see the teachers using it, but we don't see it really being integrated into, into instruction. And so, One Berkeley Connects is designed to give teachers the same device, kids the same device, and support teacher professional development through things like Google Classroom so that actually our students are using the technology to learn. And so, that's a real focus of the Advanced Ed priority and also of One Berkeley Connects. The second part, we talked a little bit about some of the components of the instructional, instruction and accountability redesign that we did this year. And actually, it was done at over $100,000 cost savings. But the most important thing, I think, that it did is to kind of build on those powerful practices that were identified by Advanced Ed. You'll remember, common curriculum, common assessments, and PLCs. And to bring the voice of the principal with recent experience into the decisions about assessment and curriculum at the schools. And so, that reorg really supports that second improvement priority from Advanced Ed. So, great organizations, and I put three very well-known trademarks there for you to think about, don't stand still. They're always looking for the next thing. They're prepared when necessary to make drastic changes. And they're prepared to lead, not follow. And that's what we're doing in Berkeley County schools. We want to build on our reputation as being among the finest educational districts in the state of South Carolina. And I'd put us up against a lot nationwide. So, the next steps, you know, with any plan, you've got to monitor it. You've got to measure whether it's getting you where you want to go or not. And you've got to adjust and update the plan. So you've heard a lot of words from us this afternoon. But I think the proof is probably in showing you the faces. And so, we've got just a real short little video clip that shows some of the things that we've been talking about happening in our classrooms and throughout the school and community. I think that very successfully puts a face on it. So I want to thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity this afternoon to share a lot of words and a few faces with you. And we're very happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time, or comments.
Chairman, may I have the microphone?
You may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Everything, and you've provided us with a great deal of information, Superintendent. It's, it's truly a thick book, and I've enjoyed looking through it. My compliments to all of your staff on the hard work they've done. I just would like to, to mention two issues that are very near and dear to my heart. And that's your work with the Office of Communications and how great a job these folks are doing. No longer are we sitting back waiting to respond. We now have a strategy to provide. And I think that is a, a big leap forward. I would encourage Superintendent Blackburn, as well as your staff, to continue with the Rural Schools Initiative. It is so important. And it is something I think that will pay off in the very near future if it hasn't already started to pay off. So those two really jump out at me, among all of the wonderful things that are going on. Please continue your work in these two areas. Reverend Barnes, Mr. Wright, the Rural Schools Initiative is extremely important. I don't need to tell you folks. Continue to fight for it. It's a very important part of what we do here in Berkeley County. Outstanding job, Superintendent. That's my, my overall response. Outstanding job. As well as your staff.
May I?
Yes.
I agree with Dr. Murray. There are too many things to list, really. And all of the information you've pulled together with your cabinet is just an incredible testament how much work all of you are putting in to this. I don't, I don't think I have the words to express how excited I was to sit at Stratford for that first public forum. That's the only one I was able to attend because of work. And I, I, I know how much time it took all of you to get those, a lot of information boiled down into those bites. But it was so nice to sit in the middle of that auditorium and hear the conversations around me that were, in general, very, very positive. Because people just don't know. And I think that's what all of us as board members can identify with, is constantly, you know, being confronted at meetings or other times when people just don't know. And so, I really want to thank all of you. I know there are lots of things, plates or platters that you're spinning. And to add that to your nights here lately, I know, is a huge investment in raising the consciousness about really and truly what's going on in this district and what's needed. So, great job. I, I am very proud to be associated with all of the, the work that you're doing. And hearing those teachers and parents around me. Also, talking about the pride they have and how organized all of that was. So, I don't know how long it took you to pull those together. And I know you're not over the finish line yet. But I hope this gives you a little more energy, you know, to finish them through and to continue that kind of proactive thing because it's so badly needed. So, thank you.
I just want to say, you know, I, I attended more than one of those, one or two of those forums. It takes a lot to, to sit there and people pop questions at you and you don't know what's coming. And able to respond intelligently and correctly, it takes a lot to do that. And it shows that you're, that we are transparent in what we're doing. And we are willing to, to be honest about what we're doing. I know last evening, at, at Cross, there were more questions than, than any place we have been. But, but the people really appreciate the honesty when questions were asked that were direct, that, you know, make them wonder a little bit, came out real strong. And, and honest, and, and just telling people the way it is. And that's what people want to hear about Berkeley County School. And people really, really appreciate the openness that we have now that, that, I don't know, in the past, it seemed like the, the doors were shut. To find out the information, you had to go through all the different red tapes. But now, we can go to the internet. We can go to the other means that we have now that we can find what we need. Our whole view of education in relation to making Berkeley County one district, it's something that, that, that I really applaud us for. Because right now, looking at our district and looking in the past, we, we really were two districts. And I think the goal of working through the rule initiative to bring the schools up to the level we need to, to make sure that when we walk into a school in Berkeley County, that we can say that we're one district. And I'm proud that this has been initiated. And I just hope that we'll continue to, to work on that. Thank you.
Well, you know, in this-
I thought of something else.
Okay.
Do you mind? Diane Driggers, you and your staff, oh, good grief. The numbers, when I saw those on the slide earlier, it just blows me away. That our kids are valued and trusted with all of that equipment, not to mention the teachers. There was a time not so long ago that you had to stand in line and do all kinds of things to be able to have those kinds of resources. And thank you for that, too. That is a huge accomplishment. Okay, I really will stop now.
You know, in this day and time, there's a lot of information out there. And one of the things I see these forums doing is it's putting the correct information out there. A lot of people in our community do not understand what Berkeley County Schools is really all about. And that message, that message is getting out there now. And I think we're seeing that more and more people are willing to come forward and be volunteers. I, I'm honestly, sitting here last night, it dawned on me that how many people did not even know we had a volunteer program. And, you know, it's everywhere. But there is so much misinformation about what this district has done, and where it's headed. And we need to get that message out. Since I've been on this board in two and a half years, the one theme that I have said time and time again is we do not toot our horn enough. And we need to get it out there. And finally, we are doing that. And I know that what the girls are doing, the guys and girls in the Communications Department have been doing, it's been fantastic. Thank you. And, and I just look for that to grow and grow. So, you know, right now, I, you know, I kept hearing something on the radio last night, the proof is going- the proof is going to be in the pudding, you know? And it's there, it's coming, future. Any others? Do I have a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say this much, is that it's been a pleasure to serve with past educators on this board, because you folk can certainly evaluate the improvement and how the way things have gotten better for the teachers and principals and et cetera. So when I'm hearing it from you guys, I mean, I'm endorsing it because I know that you know more about it than a lot of us. So I just want to thank the staff for impressing ex-educators from Berkeley County. So obviously, you're doing a wonderful job, and we're just not saying it just to be saying it, we're saying it because it's true and it's important to all of us. So thank you for the wonderful job you've done.
Okay, then that pretty much sums up our workshop. If there's no more questions, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Second? I have a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. Do I have any discussion? Then all those in favor of this motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.